I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes dated July twenty twenty five. Motion by Hawes.
Second.
Second by Whacker. Discussion on the agenda and minutes. If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Discussion decision to review and approve the claims and conservation claims. Discussion on the claims. Or motion for claims.
I guess I.
Question.
I know they're, they're, uh, you want a motion first?
No, what, you have a question?
Yeah, I see that, I thought it was three different, but I just quick scrolled through it. That was two different ones, the sky are from two different departments. I don't know what we're buying, but it, you know, it seems like there could be some collaboration there, but it still has to be separated out.
It has to be because of the funds that they come out of. So if it's different department, it's different line item, so it'll be different.
Well.
Yeah.
And it's much easier keeping when it's when they're separate as far as on your side because they're separated by fund or whatever.
Yeah, and then if somebody has a question that, well, why did the sheriff's office pay two hundred and fifty? We just have to go to sheriff's office line item instead of trying to figure out where it is. Um, and just so you know, from now on, the drainage claims will be in the packet for the chairman to sign along with the other claims. Apparently that hasn't, um, been, um, done in the past, and I just think the chairman should be signing them, so those will be in the packet as well.
Okay. Any other questions on the claims? All right, need a motion? Okay, motion by Hawes, approve the claims. Second. By Garmin. Discussion on claims. Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention, so would be three, three ayes, one abstention. Okay. Acknowledge the budget status report. Questions on that? Thank you, Tammy. And then we will acknowledge transfers made by the Cusworth County Auditor from general basic to secondary road in the amount of two thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars and sixty cents. And from rural basic to secondary road in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred three dollars and eighty two cents. The transfers were made on July second, twenty twenty five. For record reflect, we acknowledge those, and then up to drainage. Discussion decisions, you reconsider decision on D D sixty sub four crop damages.
So, uh, Dell, Rachel had come in, um, and Ted is here, um, to ask that we talk about your decision, um, to not pay those damages to rights laws, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll turn it over.
I don't know where our podium, huh?
Uh, roll down.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I didn't even see that.
Uh, that's fine.
So I sent you guys all an email yesterday. I don't know how long you guys have had a time, a chance to read it, not all of us read it off, so. So, rights less than are seeking a reconsideration of some of the damages assessed to us on D D sixty lap four, as we were not aware of this meeting or to be able to fund ourselves, or some of the issues at hand. Below is a list of damages, what I presume to be reasonable and somewhat understandable. Uh, Mark and Pam Reynolds cleanup steel straps. Uh, we are aware that there was some steel straps left out of there. We should have picked those up better. And I do agree that there was some time and effort that would needed to take those, or to pick those up, and I don't, I don't, uh, I guess that, yeah, I feel like that is justified, that they should ask for that. Um, since then, we have changed how we get our pipe delivered. They were coming on common carriers on this project, and there was an enormous lot of straps, and some of them got squashed in the mud, left behind, whatever. We should have got back there and picked them up better. We didn't, unfortunately, so I apologize to the landowners that had to deal with that, but unfortunately, that was the situation we were left in. Um, Michael Wallstead, he had some cleanup, chisel plow, love field leveler, tile, tile, tire repair. Um, I can also understand some of this cleanup, assuming that we'll be meeting some of those straps as well. Um, the chisel plow stuff, uh, I don't think that we were required to run chisel plow across everything, um, to reduce compaction or whatever. I don't feel like that was in the scope of our work, but can understand some of it. Field leveler, um, I'm assuming that was maybe to fill in a few ruts or something like that. And then the tire repaired, um, that's kind of a, I don't know, it was a great stake that was left behind on the entry. I guess it's part of the project. I can maybe understand some of that too. Um, Bill Wallstead to the paco litter and skip butter, and some of this I can possibly understand too, if there was a little bit of running or whatever too. Um, aside from a few things in the above complaints, the main issue we have with the damages is on the Gorkowski lands. These lands were not attempted to be worked or planted within the whole right of way throughout any of the three farms that he listed. These lands were leveled and cleaned up by rights law excavating in the same process, quality and fashion as the rest of the lands along the project. All the other lands adjacent are growing good crops along the route. I do not feel that because of land, we're not making any attempt to grow crops on the land, but the contractor should be penalized for this. We were made aware of a complaint about some rough spots in their land early in, in the spring, and some leftover rock that was not cleaned up adequately before we closed inspection ports. So, the televising ports or whatever, we got out there, heck, there was still frost and I got, whatever, we were trying to close those up and, you know, in anticipation for the guys to be able to get out there and plant, you know, as soon as they seem fit. While we completed closing of the ports, we did additional cleanup and leveling on those lands with a skid steer. Uh, R E I, R E I was under the assumption that what was done was adequate and comparable to the rest of the project's cleanup at that time. Additionally, later in the spring, we were made aware of possible missed tile connection on their land. We made a timely response and got the connection right. We were unable to level the trench correctly due to it being wet, because there was a missed tile and, and it was extra wet there. So we were, we left with intent to come back after it dried up to finish leveling. On May fourteenth, we were contacted by Tyler Conley with a picture of the rough bag filled on the tile connection, and a phone call was followed up by that discussing what needed to be done. We were asked to finish leveling as it dried out enough to do so, which we did later on that day, along with some additional leveling beyond tile fix on the same side of the road to fill in a few ruts, tire tracks. Rights law excavating was unaware of any additional leveling that needed to be done at that time. We would have done it at that time if we knew that there was something to be done. June second, we were made aware of a subtle spot on the rolling property, which we fixed the same day that we were made aware of it as well. Now, it was the last communication we had, we haven't gotten any issues on the project until after the June seventeenth supervisor meeting. Typically, at the end of the, end of a project, engineer gives us a punch list and, and, uh, we go through and fix any issues that might be at hand. Um, this punch list usually includes station numbers and what is needed to be done in each area, sometimes pictures if they need it, if we need actual clarification of what needs to be done. Rights law excavating did not receive a punch list of any kind and had no di- no idea of any further issues other than what was stated above. If we knew, knew that additionally, additional leveling was required, we would have, would have done it before planning had commenced. I did not feel that any of these issues, issues were communicating clearly to us on what was expected and needed to be done to finalize the project. We responded to every inquiry that was brought to our attention in a timely fashion, but had very little direction on what needed to be done to resolve any issues. Since the June seventeenth meeting, we had looked and taken video of the Gorkowski, and I cannot understand how this was being done farmable. Everyone else along the mains route were able to farm theirs, but no attempt was made whatsoever on the Gorkowski lands. We also had another farmer come look at it, and actually I had another guy last night look at it as well, uh, to make sure we weren't just being biased, and he, they as well, did not see any issues with it being farmable. We feel the leveling of the project was unadequately enough for normal farming practices throughout the project. Additional work with chisel plows to release compaction was not in the scope of our work and is an expected result of construction. This is why crop damages are spread over multiple years. And then a few clarifications from additional discussion from the June seventeenth meeting. I think on the Gorkowski land, he did some additional leveling after we did tile searching, um, early in the spring. And essentially, we left everything rough when it comes to settle, settling, and with the intention that we're coming through with our main project through that same area, and everything would be leveled additionally at that time. Um, this, the Bill Wallstead tile fix, uh, so this, this was a collapsed tile within the right of way of our, our construction or in the area of our, our work. And the tile was hooked up to our new main during construction. We did some tile searching in the area, um, where these, these fixes were. Uh, we fixed the washout on that tile at that time, and could see a few additional subholes along the tile while we were doing this tile searching. We were informed by the engineer that this was beyond the scope of our work to repair those subholes at that time, because it was, you know, past where we were, we were actually working. Um, and we did fix one of them while we were searching, because it's a pretty easy spot to find where the tile was, because it was a washout. So then, you know, the collapsed tile was beyond our connection point essentially, and that's why originally we sent the bill to Wallstead. But after discussion with him, it was assumed to do the traffic and construction from the project, so we forwarded the bill to the district. So, essentially, it really had nothing to do with our project, and it was on a private tile, so we assumed, well, that should go to the landowner. But after talking with him and Dad kind of arguing with him about it, I guess, as you could say, that he felt like it was because of this construction, whether it be traffic or whatever, that the collapsed tile was caused by that, so that's why we forwarded it to the district. Um, an additional missed tile. We do our best to hook up any distant tile that we see. Unfortunately, some, some can be missed during construction. We fully understand our responsibility to connect any distant tile to the new, new main, and will do so as we are notified or made aware. Um, the bedding stone cleanup. This project, we use it, we use an enormous amount of rock due to the skill to the project and method of installation, roughly twenty-five thousand ton. It is nearly possible to get it all cleaned up without taking a good amount of topsoil there in it. We took the approach to clean up, clean it up without taking a bunch of topsoil, or as little as possible, knowing there were areas, the thin layers of rock left on top, which would get worked on, worked under with normal farming practices. Hindsight, this may not have been the best approach on our end, but we had good intentions to try to keep the lands topsoil where it should be, on top of the ground. Compaction and working ground and completion of the project. This was not in the scope of our work on this project, but I feel that this would be a good addition to projects moving forward, and would help alleviate some of the issues landowners had. And I also wanted to mention that we did come in severely under budget on this project, and was kind of surprised by the, some of the complaints. Obviously, this is a pretty good sized project. Page at crop damages, I believe, for three years after the project. Guys have to realize it's not going to be exactly how it should be the first year. There is compaction, there's, there's things that happen during the project that are going to be unavoidable. And then I also attached a video, it was the only one I could upload, and sent it through email, but I do have the two other farms on my phone, if you guys would like to look at those as well. And honestly, it'd just be, it'd be good to be able to drive up there and just take a look at those, those three farms, to be honest with you. That's all I got.
Appreciate it, Tab. I guess, uh, be good to get everyone together then.
Yeah.
And, uh, have a group discussion.
I agree with that.
Yep, no, I think that'd be, be good too, so.
Do we need to structure, like, an informal, or informational meeting, or as a public hearing? Probably not do that.
Hopefully.
Well.
It doesn't, I don't know, it has to be a public hearing, my first thought, but because with.
Well, I think if we follow the same guidelines for notices and stuff like that.
But does the whole district have to be here? Like, do we have to notify the whole district, or just the, because we're only going to talk about these damages?
Well, it would be for the purpose of discussing the damages, so I would assume the landowners with damage complaints would be the ones that you know about it, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And, and really, the only one that I'm disputing for the most part is uh, the Gorkowski, the Gorkowski lands.
Yeah.
Aside from maybe some chisel plowing and stuff, but, you know, I'm, I think that some of that is reasonable as well, but, you know, the, the main thing is, is we would have fixed anything that needed to be fixed had we had a punch list or some sort of a indication that something needed to be, needed to be fixed as well.
So maybe Bolton and Mink needs to be part of that too?
I think, I think Tyler, and I've, I've spoken with Tyler about this as well, and I think that he, he agreed he would like to be there as well.
Send our oversight.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if it's just a couple, I mean, maybe that can just be handled with a phone call. If you guys want to set a date, I can just call those people and let them know.
Yeah.
Unless you think it needs written.
I don't think we need a big mailing, just have an agenda item to make sure we let those people know, yeah.
Okay, so if you just want to let me know when you want to do it, I will contact who you tell me to contact.
Um, I think as this is Kyle's district, correct, that we should probably have him tell you what his availability is too, so.
Yeah, I talked to him yesterday, and he said that he didn't think he'd be able to make it to the meeting because of some family issues or whatever, but, um, I think that he would definitely want to be here.
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever this is being discussed and, um, you know.
Just a question, is it, uh, what are, what are people, I mean, you, you mentioned in there, I did read it yesterday, that maybe chisel plowing or whatever should be part of the project. Is, has it been part of some projects in the past?
So like on a drainage ditch, we are required after we threw the spoil out in Lovewood, we have to, have to go through and chisel plow and then go back and pick up rocks. And I think that that would be a good addition to these mains as well, because some, you know, as we're digging through a field, we, we dig up rocks and stuff like that, so I think it just a, a cleanup situation like that, you know, chisel plow will pull anything to the top, i.e. the, the, the steel straps. I'm sure that most of these steel straps, I'm assuming anyways, they found after they worked the ground, you know, pulled to the top or whatever, got somehow partially buried under the ground and pulled them up, and so it would help with some additional cleanup. However, we don't have to worry about the steel straps, but any projects moving forward, because we changed how we, how we did that, because they were such a pain in the butt, but.
Well, I said this out loud already, maybe at some meeting, but, you know, just, I'm not talking to you because I've never been around you or whatever, but there's a lot of, oh, there's a hole, let's throw something in it.
Yeah.
And to, and I, I, I think that's a poor practice in general. You know, every, anything that comes delivered, it should be taken out type of thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, that hole's there, it's tempting.
Yeah, well, and, you know, in this case, with the steel straps being left on top, there was a hole there and it should have been in the hole, or, or, or hauled away, one or the other. Um, I don't disagree with that.
There's also a line, this is, this is, give me your favor, bear with me a second, there's also a line where there's, you know, it's not going to be the same as it was before you started, it just isn't.
Right.
That's, that's, uh, that's the hazard of it calling Kyle, I mean, it just.
I mean, the sheer amount of dirt that we moved and then, really, the, when, on that project, he went by suit of spec, so we had to bed the, bed the pipe from the bottom of the pipe all the way to the top of the pipe with rock. And I mean, we used, we used a load of rock per pipe, about sixty.
Twenty-five thousand tons.
I mean, it was a ridiculous amount.
That's a lot.
And, uh, you know, so we have to take that into consideration of what we were required to do, and, you know, I'm not saying that we couldn't have done a better job of cleaning up rock, and the, the two sided, two sides of that is, is you either take six inches of topsoil off and get that remainder of the rock cleaned up, or you leave a little bit of rock and just assume that it's going to get worked under, you know, in the next three years, you know, while this project is still getting paid some sort of damages, so. You know, hindsight, it looks a lot better if it's completely cleaned up. I'm not sure that all landowners would agree that that's the best amount to go, because the fertilizer, everything else is already on top, and you're disturbing all of that, so I, I felt like we tried to kind of pick a happy medium, and in some spots, there is, you can see some rock on the, on top of the ground, and, and, uh, you know, we tried to do our best and did what we thought was, was necessary to, to clean up, but.
So are they going to say, sorry to interrupt you about it, are they going to say, well, if you wouldn't have been out there in a overly wet conditions, there wouldn't have been so much rock buried on top and stuff?
Um.
Is that going to be a, is that going to be part of the discussion?
Obviously, if we can't get a truck out there, you know, if it's too wet to get a truck out there, we're knocked up in rock out there, but, um, we also have a deadline on the project to get it done in a timely fashion, so we.
But that works for everybody, again, that's in your favor. I mean, if people want it to get done, so we can't wait for perfect days.
We had a deadline that we had to have it completed on, so we had to, I mean, obviously, you guys know what kind of challenges we had last spring. Um, and that really put it kind of, kind of backed us up about a month and a half, so we had to charge whenever we could. But, uh, yeah, I mean, most, like, this project that we're doing south of Sway City now, there's substantially less rock being used on that project because of the method of install that we're utilizing now. And I think as we're learning, and as the engineers learning, that, that we didn't have to do the, the extent of the rocking that we did on that project, so. Since plastic pipe is fairly new to the county, I mean, we put in concrete mains for years and years and years uh, in Cusworth County, but just in the last five years, we started using some plastic here and there, and there's some pretty substantial, um, savings by using the plastic pipe, but there's also some different challenges that you have to face with it as well.
Yeah, well, the guy that, yeah, I'm talking, the guy that the tile, I mean, goes through, think, he thinks he's abused compared to the guy that's three hundred yards up, but, but, but it is going through his land, which makes things easier for him.
Yeah, too, outside, there's, there's some give and take, I'd say. Yeah, well, and kind of the main point that I wanted to make was, you know, across that whole project, we leveled everything pretty much exactly the same. Everybody else was able to plant a crop on theirs. This guy didn't even make an attempt, from what I can see anyways, and I, like I said, I had two different landowners, farmers come up and look at it and say, hey, is this farmable, you know, could have this been farmed? And both of them said absolutely it could have been farmed, but he just made no attempt whatsoever. And if he had issues, which obviously he did have issues with whatever was done, we were not made aware, fully aware of what was, what was needed to be done to, to get him into the field either. So, I felt like there was a little bit of miscommunication there, and also even, even with the miscommunication, it was farmable.
Well, yeah, thanks, Tab, and.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Yep.
Get ahold of Kyle. Ted, will you write your cell phone number down for me, and then once the board comes up with a date, I can let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Have a good one, you guys.
You too, thanks. Yeah, do, do we want to pick a date? Now, or do you ask Kyle first?
I would say ask Kyle and see what.
See, see what works best for him, or what he thinks, so. Okay, well, we'll do that, and.
Then I can put it on the agenda for Tuesday to set the date.
That'd be fine.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, just so we know.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's part of the minutes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, eh, ask Kyle and then
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda to, for officially, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That will work, so we'll take no action on that today. Okay, discussion decision, M O U, memorandum of, of understanding between Humboldt and Cusworth County Drainage Districts.
So this was also something I had in my notes to discuss again in July. I did send an email to Humboldt County, um, because I couldn't remember if we were still waiting for anything from them or not, and I never got a reply back. Um, so, um, I don't know where we were on this, but I didn't want it to get fall through the cracks, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. Hopefully, you guys know where we are.
Where we were on it was, we didn't know if this was even something we needed to do, because we had checked with, um, John Torgerd, Iowa Drainage District Association, which is where Humboldt was getting this from.
Okay.
Supposedly, and he didn't know anything about it.
Oh.
And and it didn't sound, for the people that were, we had contacted at the time, I don't know if Jim Hudson was asked about it or, or what, but wasn't familiar with it anyway.
Okay.
And so, I guess, I think where we were at was before we proceeded and voted on something. We were going to ask, um, what's I D A D A's attorney? Well, anyway, check with him and see what, where this was coming from.
Did anybody do that?
And I.
Um, because I think the, you know, one of the things we talked about is that dollar amount is different than what we follow by code, so.
Correct. So we'd be doing something different with Humboldt County than any other county.
Right, right, so I think that's, that was the hangup.
Mm-hmm, and I had asked another, I'd asked a couple other supervisors at just another committee meeting that, um, for something different, but just while we were there about this, and, and they didn't have anything like this either, so I don't know why it would suddenly be everyone's in violation of the law. You know what I mean? Like, like, it's not just Cusworth County that, uh, doesn't have something like this, so.
And so Humboldt County hasn't reached back out to you, Tony?
I have not gotten a response, so.
I, I, I don't know what I mean, I'd just wait and see.
Okay.
See what they say and.
So pretty much do nothing, and if they reach out at a later time, we can bring it up, if not?
Yeah, at that time, if we need to reach out to an attorney, we can, but at this point, I don't see why we would need to, just because, you know, we are following the code, and as long as we do that, and they conform with the law.
I mean, if, I guess if we're in violation, then so are at least four other counties in northern Iowa, so I, I don't know.
So, nobody ever talked to this Drainage District Association attorney?
I have not, so, and, and that's something I was like, I mean, could try and reach out. I don't even know his name or his number, but I'm sure we could get it.
I don't know who it is.
I don't know who it is either.
I've heard his name before, but I can't think of it.
Okay, I will just file it away and.
I'd say don't worry about it if I bring something else to you, or Rick Peterson calls me and says, hey, what are you doing?
Okay.
Then, then we'll talk about it. Okay. No action on that than today either, so. Uh, discussion decision to approve drainage repair requests, which I think there's only a couple for Kyle today.
Yeah.
So, we'll just need a motion for supervisors to handle their requests, then.
Someone?
Okay, motion by Whacker.
Second.
Okay, second by Garmin. Discussion.
Do we want to at least read them off, or?
We can, or you can read them next week or whatever.
Yeah, I guess if you want to read them next week, that's fine, that's fine.
So put it on the agenda again for next week then? And you don't need to approve it if he's going to read it?
I'd, I'd say.
Well, unless he wants something that should be handled, you know.
Differently.
I, we, we need to, we need to approve today.
Maybe he at least has a copy of it, I think. I think it's okay to say the number and where it is and stuff like that, and then that way, if he needs to handle it, he can.
Okay.
So. Morning, Charlie, good, uh, number, he's got number fifty and D D eighty-two, lap thirty. It's in Lincoln, section nine. It's an outlet into the ditch on lateral thirty where the middle branch of the Blue Earth River and lateral thirty meet. Sounds like Duane David's will email Kyle some photos. And then we've got request number fifty-one. And what is that?
Um, S D D ten slash sixty, lap A one.
Okay. Okay. What Tammy said, section twenty-four of Eagle, and he's got five hundred feet of seven inch tile broke or plugged, and water runs up in the ditch and goes through the culvert. This is Doug Worszkowski.
I'll have him sign on.
Kyle can sign those? So, we've got. So we've got a motion second on the floor, any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion Gary Janus. Okay. Discussion decision to approve joint twenty-eight E agreement with Wright and Hamilton County Veterans Affairs.
So Dan had mentioned this to you guys before, he is gone this week, so he's not able to be here. But he said he'd still like you guys to approve it.
He sent an email, Joe.
Yes, so that is what that is. The other counties have already signed it, so Wright and Hamilton have signed it. So it's just Cassoot County.
Motion to approve twenty-eight E with Hamilton County, with Wright and Hamilton. Okay, motion by Whacker. Need a second.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, second by Haas, discussion.
So was one of the counties charging them significantly more than her, was the right, it's Wright, it's gonna help, and we're gonna help, and they were fifty and we're at thirty-five? Are they different, did they explain that? I'm not even sure where I was, saw that.
In number two, first page, number two.
Fifty-eight, so.
And my guess is that's the difference in the wages between the two counties, but that's just a guess.
That's what I was gonna say too, but no.
You've done something like this before, there's no?
I think we have done it. I don't know if we have, if we've had an MOU before, but we have helped other counties out before. Whether it's by.
Well, God knows, we need help sometimes.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed.
I guess if Dan was happy with this, then. Okay, no further discussion. And all in favor of approve, or do we need, we probably need a roll call.
Um, yes.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote then.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion Gary. Okay, discussion decision to approve corrected wage of recorder staff member.
So when it was printed and you guys approved the resolution, one of the staff members, and I think it's on your sheet, her longevity was omitted from that. So now it's corrected to add her longevity amount. So that's the only change we, her longevity was missed.
Okay, yeah. So we need a motion to approve that change?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Haas, second by Garyman. Discussion on the motion. If not all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion Gary. Do you wanna call Doug up, Josh? Please. You have things I can sign, I mean.
This whole stack.
This whole stack.
We are up to the funds transfer. All right, thanks.
Let me get back to me. Oh, we had that one from that claim from that. Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Not the fifty-first.
Not the fifty-first. Okay, so this top one needs to be signed by the board? All right.
Yeah, that's, yep, that's.
And then all these I need to sign?
Let it finish first.
Yes, then those are the drainage claims that I'll now be bringing to you to sign.
Okay. Oh, and they're separated there, okay.
It's just, it's the same stuff that's in there, it's just the actual claim should be signed.
Okay.
I think.
You abstained from the drainage claims or?
Is that great?
This is drainage.
Oh, that is a drainage, okay.
But it's all together, so technically you did abstain.
You abstained from the motion, so.
I have way down, I think, unless you wanna cross it out.
You could, should I be next to your name abstained?
I, yeah.
You want me to sign next to department head?
I just want to sign on the list.
Oh, so that one is a joint one, so sign underneath it or wherever. So on the joint ones, so the other county's up there. And that's what prompted us to say we should be doing that too.
Okay. Morning, Doug.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, we're up to resolution to transfer funds from the transfer station to the equipment fund. For operating fund to the equipment fund. Yep. Whenever you're ready.
There is some information in your folder. I believe the first sheet is just the balance sheet for fiscal year twenty-five, July through June. You can see we, just as a reminder, we have the eighty-one thousand, which we call our operating fund, eighty-one zero zero two, our post-closure fund, and then eighty-one zero zero three is the equipment fund. You can see that our expenditures versus receipts for the operating, we were almost sixty thousand dollars greater in receipts revenue than what we were in expenditures, fifty-six thousand dollars. And then overall, of all the funds down there at the bottom of the sheet, we had fifty-nine ninety-five overall. So we had a very good year at the transfer station. The second sheet shows the equipment schedule, showing that equipment. This is Doug Miller's depreciation schedule, what we need in order to replace equipment at the transfer station. You can see finishing calendar year twenty-twenty-four, if you look to the left there, we had the need for three hundred forty-three thousand thirty-six dollars. We did include thirty thousand dollars into our equipment fund, which gave us a balance of one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. This year, I would like to transfer forty-five thousand, since we had a good year with our transfer station. And that would get it up to one hundred ninety-two thousand. We're still sitting, I believe our transfer station is operating very well. We're still able to, we have good equipment up there, we're able to maintain it. I think in the next fiscal year, we should purchase another trailer, a waste trailer, so that we can ensure that we're starting to replace those on a timely basis. They're purchased in twenty-twenty-one, so they're getting to be five years old. We are seeing repairs needed for them, but it's just getting into a rotation. But I would ask the board to approve of transferring these funds from the operating to the equipment, just as a reminder to us all that we gotta keep that equipment fund going and not allow our operating fund to be reduced without keeping the equipment fund going.
Where does the equipment fund get its money, other than this?
Just the operating.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
This will be resolution number zero seven, one-five-two-five-zero-one.
Sorry. Will you repeat that, please?
Yep, this will be resolution oh-seven, one-five-two-five-o-one.
Thank you.
And we have a motion by Garmin to approve. Is there a second?
Yep.
Second by Haas, discussion on the resolution. Hearing none, a roll call vote please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion Gary. Okay, we're up to letters of support for bridges contained in the federal CHBP grant application.
Yeah, we visited a little bit. We have two, Cassoot County has two bridges that are in a grant that is being submitted to the federal government, the federal DOT, for, it would be competitive highway bridge program funding, two bridges. One is located right to the east of Ledyard, the other one straight north of Fenton on P-16. Iowa fifteen will curve off to the west, and if you keep on going on P-16, you go over, over the East Fork of Blue Earth River, that bridge there is contained in it also. The DOT is the main sponsor of this grant, and they are asking for letters of support from different people. And I'm asking the board of supervisors to simply sign this letter and get it set off. So I ask for a motion to approve of the letter. We will get the, we'll get these signed and move forward from there.
Okay.
I think I included the motion in your electronic folder.
Yep, you did.
However, I don't think I printed, I printed one.
That's okay, I can, you're fine.
Printed a second.
Nope, that's no worries.
Sorry.
Cool. We'll need a motion to approve the letters of support then?
Yes.
Yep, motion by Haas, second by Garmin. Discussion on the motion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, I did, I got a copy for Tammy and a copy for myself. So if you could just sign that and then pass it down, Carter, please? For everyone to sign. That's the front page.
Oh, okay.
So if you're just, sign that.
Oh, okay, thank you. I totally missed that.
Here, when there's a motion there on that one. Here, just go ahead and pass that one down. You can keep that motion, Tammy. I'll get these all.
Okay. So this one doesn't need to be signed up?
No, it does not.
I don't see much of claims this morning. You can't prehug.
I will bring that, those letters up to you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Sort it here.
Okay, I think we're good now. Yeah, construction in the right of way whenever you're ready.
Yes, we do have one request. This is from MediaCom, and it happens to be for some of the work that's being completed out at Highway eighteen. We did not print up a motion to approve of that. But I would recommend that the board would approve of the utility combination permit for MediaCom at the intersection of one hundred forty Avenue and Highway eighteen.
Okay, need a motion to approve. Hello, motion by Whacker. Second by Garmin.
MediaCom do out there, Doug?
I don't know if it's fiber optic cable that would possibly be running for intercom or internet service. I would, that would be my guess there. Who's that motion in second line, Carter?
Uh, Whacker and Garmin.
Thank you, John.
Yep. Okay. We have a motion second, so all in favor of approving construction in the right of way, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Discussion.
Yes. The resurfacing projects, the B-sixty-three, everything is resurfaced. We do, we've been on that and gotten driveways, crossroads taken care of. We do need some shouldering, the contractor is responsible for that. And they will be moving on when they have more resurfacing completed. On B-fifty-five, the Erbington Road there, they should be finished today. And we will get on that once that mat is cooled, and they will get shouldering on that. And then tomorrow, they'll begin on the boat Hobart Road, P-thirty. At, they're gonna begin at Smithfield, the railroad crossings, work on that mile. We have been notifying the public, there was a radio notification. There was a radio uh, notification this morning, they had the time incorrect. We did try to get the radio to um, there was an email sent out, I think the radio will get that correction made. But they'll be working on P thirty. The bridge, Godverson Smith is planning to port caps Thursday. Um, micro-surfacing is complete. Uh, we have received applications for the engineer's office, technician, engineering aide, and they are going to shop, we're looking at those applications now. The Humboldt County technician is working this week while Nick Rockler takes uh, takes some vacation. We'll be getting Humboldt County reimbursed for that work. The secondary road annual report, I'm working on that. And next week is rag bri, so at the end of this week, we'll be doing just some typical uh, brimming of intersections. Trying to make sure, we're mowing that route right now, trying to make sure that it's ready for the bikes. As far as waste management, just a reminder, we have a comp plan meeting July twenty-ninth. I'll start getting some emails out to people on that. And for self-insurance, working on some end of the year, end of fiscal year self-insurance work. Kind of everything that's going on in our office.
That email, I think I know where, about the boat over in there.
Yes.
Is that road gonna be closed for the day, or is it gonna be longer than that?
Closed for the day.
They'll do the whole mile, or just?
Well, they'll get the railroad tracks, um, get that completed. So that, that takes about ten to twelve hours. One thing, we're dependent on weather, there's a little bit of rain forecasted, we'll see what happens. But yes, and we have been talking with uh, people at the mill and at the office there, so they're aware of what's going on. But once we get that railroad track, then it'll be uh, there'll be a pile of car, they'll be taking traffic to it. So there may be some time periods where access is limited. And once it can get in and out, they'll be able to go north or south, we're working with them on that.
I had a landowner reach out to me on the Hannah Blacktop. Was concerned about the drop-off on the shoulder, but you're doing shoulder, shoulder work's not completed.
It's not complete, yes. They got, they got a portion of the road complete.
Yep.
Um, they had a crew in that was doing some work and they finished out the week doing that, but they still have more.
That's the way it looked, but uh, yeah, yep.
There's definitely work to do.
Okay. Anything else for discussion?
All right.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
You wanna have a good day.
You do this. Are we up to discussion with you? Yeah, discussion with Cassuth County Auditor.
Okay, um, first thing, August sixth is the countywide breakfast, so I need the RSVP, Amber. I know you've already talked to Kelly, um, but I need to know if everybody else plans on attending.
Well, let's do.
It's completely up to you.
Don't sound so excited, Howard.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I already have it in the calendar.
Okay. And it's August sixth from eight to ten at Saint Michael's Parish Center in Manoa. Um, so we are in the process of um, getting drainage assessments done, so we can finish taxes. And we're moving right along, but as you've noticed, we amended the agenda for today because um, we know of one waiver that was approved during completion hearing, DD sixty, sub four. Um, and we had that information, but there's a lot of other um, larger amounts of assessments on the drainage schedule that we weren't sure if anything's ever been approved, we couldn't find, we did, I know Melissa sent you guys an email. And um, we did get a response from a couple of you that maybe some of the larger ones um, could be waived. So we did amend it, so you guys could discuss that today. We can't move any further with taxes until we um, get that approved from you guys. So um, we did um, do have that to talk about here shortly. We are um, starting a project in the drainage room, our new drainage clerk is gonna be starting next Tuesday. Um, we have a lot of drainage claims, old drainage claims that take up a lot of room in that office that need to be scanned in. So we're going to be, um, I've sent an email to Derek, haven't heard back yet. We have a limit on how much scanning we can do with document locator. So I need to find out what that extra cost would be per year um, to do that. But those, some of those items need to be scanned in. Retention period is two years after um, the audit has been completed. But we still like to have those old files at least stored away somewhere, so we can assess them if we need to later date. So um, we're starting to go through, get rid of that, we're gonna bring in more file cabinets um, and try to um, make more room for the drainage files, and so that's a project we're gonna start. And um, hopefully our um, new drainage clerk, um, that will help her get familiar with how that system works and some of that stuff as well, and then she can help um, set that up the way that works for her as well. But um, so the drainage room is kind of a must, please bear with us. We're trying to get it so that um, you can find things easily um, and make it easier to get information from landowners, so. But we'll wait to hear back from Derek and how much, cause usually we run out of scans by the end of the year. So I need to know how much more that's gonna cost in order to scan those extra items. But they do at some time need to be scanned, so we're gonna have to pay at one time.
Be worth it.
Yeah.
Be worth it.
Yeah.
To not have to start and stop a project, it would be worth it, you can start and you can just get it done.
Get it done, and yeah, I think now is the time to do it too. So, and I did ask Doug, I know he has an intern summers, that's when scanning out coordinates and other um, stuff. So I did let him know if he's looking for more stuff to do, that we would have tons of stuff he could do in the drainage room as well, so.
Were you gonna scan by like drain, or what were your thoughts or thought?
Yeah, so by drain is what we're thinking, the, the claims. And then our thought process is, instead of keeping the claims in a complete separate, that we will make a file folder in front of each drain and those claims can go right in that drainage file. So that when we have a request, ten years down the road, for what claims were paid for that, we just have to pull the file and say, this is the claims that were paid for that project. Instead of trying to go back to the computer and go through everything. Then we will have it right there um, in that, in that drain file. That's our thought process, instead of having it two different places to have it all together.
Good idea.
Um, and I think that that's all I have.
Was there any follow-up for that email that you sent us in regards to the home IP or?
Um, she said that she was going to send out an email, um, letting all the parties know that um, that we were working on it, um, that it will be, I think it's on the agenda next week, I thought it was this week, but I think it's next week. Um, to talk about it and that um, it wasn't something that was forgotten, um, but that it is being addressed, so. Um, but I haven't heard anything back, I don't know if she was just sending it to the people who filed the complaint or if she was sending it to all of us, I'm not sure, but um, that is what I've heard last week.
Did they give us a timestamp, or did they?
IPAB, no.
They probably won't.
No, so. So that's all I know at this point. So I'm hoping, being it's next week, um, we can give them all the information and that will.
Issues solved.
She never told me who it was, and I didn't ask, um, but somebody filed a complaint with Iowa Public Information Bureau that they hadn't received the information for the petition. And, and part of the, not part of the issue, but it doesn't say anywhere on the petition how to get any information or where to get it to. So um, I think by having it on the agenda, hopefully they will come in and let us know if there's physical information that they're requesting how to get it to them. Because if we make copies of all the stuff they requested and mail it to all the landowners, it's gonna be cost prohibitive because it's gonna be.
No, we're not gonna do that.
I think they want it in a public meeting.
Yeah, I think they do too.
Is what they had asked.
Yeah, and I don't think it says that in the petition.
It doesn't.
Um, and, and I don't think that, that uh, Public Information Bureau is aware of that either. That they want a public hearing, not actual physical papers.
Okay, yeah, cause I think we probably have to do that.
Yeah.
The petition is pretty vague.
It, it is.
In, in that regard.
Yeah, I, I think they know what they're looking for, we have a good idea of what they're looking for, it's just hard to put it on paper.
Yeah.
I think, maybe, but.
Yeah, so i- in talking about that, um, I know you're, you guys are busy with taxes and stuff, but um, is there a plan of getting it down on paper? Like, I know I've been doing some, getting some information from the treasurer and things like that. And um, we'll most likely come to your office to get some information too. But is there a plan on how we're doing that? Like, are we gonna do some sort of a spreadsheet that just follows the timeline of these bills? This was paid, these bills, this was paid, uh, how are we, is there a plan? I mean, in my head, I kinda think I would like to see us some sort of a spreadsheet that follows the timeline. Because the question is, you know, on when the, when and where the money was put or whatever. Just to have it all laid out on a spreadsheet form. And I didn't know if that was something, obviously.
Yeah, no, that's something we were wanting to, to have. I don't know how to create a spreadsheet for that, but.
And, and we can do a spreadsheet, um, we're super busy being one percent sure, um, and trying to get everything done. But we are working on it. I pulled um, FEMA file yesterday because the FEMA funds are one of the things in question. And um, and what they paid for it, and it's, I pulled the FEMA files so that um, we can kinda create that timeline of what was paid. In two thousand twenty-one, we had the bid letting, and so, you know, what was approved for that, what was paid, what, you know, um, unfortunately, it takes more time than I'd like it to, but um.
Well, and it has, I don't know if you've done that, Tammy, but like I went to Nick and they gave me their, a copy of, of their spreadsheet that um, this, all of the, can't remember the year, um, that it started, but all of the things that have been called in for DD four main open ditch, and that's kinda helpful to see.
Yeah.
And to see what's remaining, and I didn't know if taking that and incorporating that in just to, as that double check of, okay, this was, here's what was paid with those dollars, there should be a way to track that. You know, what he shows us called in, okay, here's where those FEMA dollars went.
Yeah, and we do have a list of the warrants that have been paid, the ones that have been redeemed and the ones that are still outstanding. So we do have that list too, um, so yes, um, we are working on it, um. And hopefully we'll, I mean, if, if there's specific stuff you want on the spreadsheet, please let me know that.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's just once you start putting it together, then you kinda start to see what will help being on it, you know?
Yeah, and we um, we have the phase one and phase two. But that doesn't, um, talk about FEMA dollars, and I think they're mostly, according to the petition, concerned about FEMA dollars, so.
Yeah, um, you chief, Carter, did you by chance get a chance to ask Kyle about that spreadsheet?
I, I've talked to him, um, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. But uh, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know, uh, your office does not have.
No, they do not have it, and that would probably be important, you know, for that matter.
Yep.
Because one of the things that I wanna do in my cross-reference is, is the bills for, um, to match up the bills with the assessment.
Yep.
It's hard to do if there's no record.
Right.
Yeah, that spreadsheet did not come from our.
No, I know it didn't, yeah. Yep.
Okay, I'll probably stop down after the meeting, Tammy, cause I'll kinda show you what I was thinking, but I don't know if it's.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Oh yeah, one more question. Cause I was gonna ask it during the fund status, but then we went too quick. If we wanna know what report would be the best thing to have, if we wanna know where everybody ended up at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, like, okay, this department had this much left, this department. What, what report would be the best thing to have?
Well, fund status would just show you funds, so um, let me look and I can tell you.
Yeah, like if there's something that, I don't know if, I was trying to think if, you know, the ending expense summary, but that doesn't tie it all together, because you need kinda wanna see, okay, they budgeted this amount of revenue, they got this much in, just to kinda, just to see where everybody ended up.
Well, we, we have an expense summary.
You know, if, and if they can be together, that's okay, if there's an, you know, that last revenue summary by department. Last expense summary by department.
Um, I can.
Probably be good.
I can email that to you guys, or, or find what would be best, an email that if you'd like.
That'd be good, if, if um, I know from those reports, if you can have a page break with the departments, you know, so it doesn't all run together, then it gets confusing.
I can do that.
That's good, okay. Howard, you got anything?
Uh, I went to the department head meeting last Thursday.
Did you talk about the handbook?
There's a little, the downs are plowing forward.
Okay.
There was a long discussion about have to adjust how we pay. We can't pay in advance, and so in February, there's gonna be a pay grade where only represents two weeks of pay. And we can continue to pay on the twentieth, as it is, is what I took out of it. But in February of twenty-sixth, it will only represent two weeks' pay because it can't pay in advance.
So that will be coming to you guys um, here in a couple of weeks. I can't remember what we agreed to set for the date to bring it to you guys. So we're not just gonna do it, it is coming to you, but um, when Elizabeth was here for the audit, she had asked for a pay report from Melissa. And we couldn't run a report because our pay periods and our timesheets do not match. Um, and it brought up the old issue of prepay and the issue that we have with payroll. And she told us it has to be fixed, so um, that's what we're trying to do. Is make it so, one, that our timesheets and our pay periods actually match, and two, we're not being prepaid. So we, the department heads have been meeting and talking about what the best way to do that is. The consensus is to keep it, you know, we, we've talked about a whole bunch of different options, changing it to twice a month. Keeping it the same, changing payday, and the consensus that the group has come up with is keep the payday on the twentieth, just once a month. But um, change the pay period so that it is from the fifteenth through the fourteenth, instead of the first through the thirty. And then it will align with ours. They decided to do it in February, so that employees have from now until February to.
Do say.
Uh, department heads, sorry. Department heads are the one that, we've been discussing it together as a group.
Did they discuss the hardship that will bring to people?
Yes.
Because that's been the main.
Yes.
Thing that, reason why we have not done that?
Yes.
Because it is a hardship to people?
Yes, we have, but we don't have a choice, Elizabeth says we have to fix it. Yes, we have, but we don't have a choice, Elizabeth says we have to fix it, so, um, it has to be fixed. Um, this is the, we did talk about, um, maybe adding an extra pay period in there. Um, the consensus of department heads was to do it this way. Each department head has been given the info, or has information with calendars, for examples, that they have been talking to their employees about. Um, so that employees have, and this was after last week's meeting, so that they have, um. Until February to maybe, um, put money away or budget to help with that inconvenience in February. That's where we are with that.
I remember this discussion coming up a couple of years ago.
Did, did you guys explore biweekly?
Yes, and department heads talk to their employees, and that's not something employees, some are, some aren't. The consensus from department heads is not to change it. Um, my department would like to change it, but other departments. Yeah, are, but, uh, other departments are not interested.
Well, I, I just, I mean, I don't know all the key aspects, but like if you take February, for instance, because February is twenty-eight days. If you go to a biweekly thing, it's starting then, it really wouldn't upset that apple cart too much.
Yeah, people aren't interested in changing the dates that their, their, um, bills get paid at. They don't wanna change, that's what I think.
Nobody likes change.
Still gonna change it when they go two weeks without a paycheck. When they get, have two weeks less of a paycheck, it's still gonna change the way they do it.
I wouldn't, my opinion on that is it would get hung up too long and spend too much time discussing why we're not paying two weeks in advance. If, if anybody left here and went somewhere else, they, they'd, they'd wait two or three weeks to get a paycheck, so.
Yeah, but that's always been the hangup, the last thirty years.
It has been.
That it's been discussed, that's been the hangup, and that's been what has stopped it. So.
Okay. Would it be something worth doing? Vote on, like a ballot, like?
We already tried that, and it was all over the place, you don't get a solid answer. And like I said, this is something department heads have been working on together, this isn't one department making a decision, this is something that we've all been working on together.
Yeah.
We sent out a survey before when we tried to do it the last time.
And we sent one out a couple of years ago, and, yeah.
Well, people were down very nasty, honestly, some of them. But there is that form that's still signed correctly when people are hired.
But, um, Elizabeth says that that doesn't mean anything, that won't stand up.
Well, that's what we were told to do though.
Yeah.
At the time, and we were given guidance on that, that was legal guidance, so.
Yeah, and, and I agree, that's a good thing, but she said it doesn't mean anything, so.
So this is something that it will just be a finding next year?
She said, I asked her, um, what, what could happen, and she said it could be a finding, so, she didn't say it would be.
Well, you know, I'm kinda playing the devil's advocate, but we have findings all the time that are in there, in there repeatedly, and nothing gets done about it. So what difference does it make?
Well, it's, it is bad practice, we are prepaying people, um, for time that they haven't yet worked. Um, our timesheets and our pay periods do not match, it's, it's bad practice, bad, bad accounting, and we need to fix it. And when it comes by, from a recommendation from our auditing firm, I think it's something we need to, to do.
Anything else, Howard?
Went down and mentioned biometrics screening on August twenty-first or whatever. I didn't, I didn't quite catch if they encouraged that, I didn't understand, but.
So that's the, the blood draw.
I know what it is, but if you're doing that, if you're, if you're having an annual, cuz they go, and you're doing it then. Why, why reinvent the wheel? I know that's a question for.
Well, a lot of times what they do is schedule this, and so that you have this, and then you schedule your physicals, you don't have to have the blood draw at your physical. You already have this done, yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Amber?
Okay. Yeah, any meaning?
Yeah, uh, last Wednesday, I went over to, uh, NiACOG, we had North Central Regional Emergency. Planning Committee and Commission Meeting back to back, um, the committee. We had a report from the hazmat team, uh, they had a couple of calls. One was an enforced city for diesel leak at their power facility. Another call was to Northwood, they had a, uh, truck with batteries on it that caught fire. And leaked a bunch of battery acid, so they had to deal with that, um. They got six new members on the hazmat team over there, four of them they're sending down for training. That was pretty much it for the committee meeting, the commission, we, uh, went over the ending numbers for the year. And, um, we came in, uh, just shy of forty thousand under budget this year, so. Did really well for, for the budget, and then, um, discussed the, the fact that they're using. CDs and, and savings accounts with local banks over there to get, um, you know, good percentage rate for, um. Interest, uh, they got, all the banks, I can't remember what the bank was, they, they, uh, signed off for four point five. Percent interest rate for, uh, CD, and that's how NiACOG has been getting by the last several years. About having to increase dues is because the, the interest that they're earning on the bond, on these, so. So, doing pretty good with that. And I have a whole lot of other stuff to report on that. After that meeting, we had our, um, Transportation Policy Board meeting. Just went through and approved our, uh, next year's, um, plans for. The TPWP, don't ask me what the names, I can never remember it, um, it's like transportation. I can't remember exactly what it's called, but the, of the acronym for it, but. Um, basically, it's, it's, uh, the federal funds that come in to our region, and then. The county engineers can apply for the funds and stuff to be used on projects. How, like, five years in advance, they can get the projects kinda planned, so we just go through and approve it. Um, at the July meeting every year, uh, there was one instance where. Money was approved for a project and found out that it was not, um. Qualified for the, the, the dollars that was approved, so they had to determine, so it was. Um, we ended up with a one point seven million dollars, uh, almost one point eight remaining. To be used on projects up to, uh, fiscal year twenty-nine, um, so they're looking for. Applications from engineers on, on projects to, um, do for that. Other than that, I did not have any other.
Okay. Neither did I, so, I'll just be at the meeting tonight, don't forget, six thirty.
Doctor Gai, from Notre Dame yesterday, he didn't know anything about the meeting, is this his word of mouth, radio?
No, and, and if he doesn't know, it means he's probably not in that drainage, cuz it's, the notices were sent out. To people that, it affects that are in that drainage.
How many, like, how many was that?
Quite a bit.
I can't remember.
Hundreds?
I don't know, um, maybe a hundred, maybe, um, but I can't remember for sure.
Okay, well, nothing else, we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
No.
No, oh, no, we're not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we are not ready for a motion to adjourn, uh, I read too far down here. Discussion decision to approve waivers for twenty twenty-five fall drainage assessments.
Okay, so, I put in your packets. Additional, um, drains that, that Kyle had said maybe needed to, maybe you need to have waivers. And then I would like you guys to see if there's any that you think need waivers. Um, so that can be added, so we can finish with taxes. The ones that, um, Kyle suggested are DD four lat two, DD eighty lat eighty. DD eighty lat eighty-one, DD eighty-two, DD one fourteen, and DD one twenty-nine, and he suggested ten years on those. Instead of twenty. And then, do you guys have any that you think?
Yeah, I really don't have a whole lot to, as far as drains in my district, that will need that.
Okay.
Well, the big thing is just making it so it's not such a hardship.
Right, right.
Some of these, you know?
Well, cuz some of them already have, these are just new waivers.
And this is additional waiver in addition to the DD sixty sub four.
Right.
Because some of them were, I mean, are, some of them ones that had not been assessed before, so it's, so it's gonna be.
I mean, I've got like eighty-four, but that's already got waivers on it and everything.
Yeah, eighty-four, we're only assessing. We're, we're assessing eleven thousand on eighty-four.
Because it already has a waiver.
Oh, no, sorry, we're not assessing anything on eighty-four right now.
Because of the, but it's got the, the waivers, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but we're not doing an assessment, so we can't offer anything else.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, it's already, it's already taken care of, yeah, yeah.
So these are the ones that aren't.
Right, so, I mean, I'm saying that's my only drain that, that would even.
Okay.
Have anything done during the last few years. Of that magnitude, so.
So if there's not any, any additional that you have, then I'd just like a, a motion to approve these additional ones that I listed.
Is, is PAK one from the project clean out here a couple of years ago?
The assessment?
Is, I mean, is that all paid for?
I do not know, I'd have to look further.
Yeah, I mean, that's been a few years, but.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah, I think.
That was never in a joint drain or anything, so.
PAK one is a joint drain?
No, I know it was never in the, in any of the sheets or anything.
No, not this year, we hadn't.
So, cuz we were waiting on. Some of that for the new work, which was supposed to be done sooner than that one. That was kinda weird, or we were, kept pushing off work to be done in that drain, to be done with the, the whole engineer project. Still waiting on.
Yeah, okay.
So the, this work was done this year? It's older than that, or?
I don't know, so all I did was, all I think Kyle did was look at the assessments that you guys have approved. And looked at the ones that would, like Amber said, be a hardship, and offer waivers on those larger amounts.
So in order to figure that out, you had to look at the total amount, and the other how many acres are against it, and what would be to, to pay it.
Right, so what, when there's waivers put on it, then there's, um, basically letters to every landowner that lists out all of their acres. And at that time, they can make that decision whether they pay it or whether they do the waiver, so.
But they only have till August thirty-first, so.
To decide, yeah.
We, we have to get that process started, and then when we do taxes, that information. What the interest rate is, how long the waivers are, all has to be inputted in the system.
When he makes, when he made this decision to do these six, so it was, it was a function of looking at the total amount it cost, and by, by how many acres are out.
No, uh-uh, no, he just looked at what you got, he, I, this is what I believe. He just went down the list of what you guys have agreed to assess, and looked at the ones with the larger amounts of money. And thought that the landowners may appreciate having waivers on those, so it's not such a hardship.
So, Amber, did you have any other ones you wanted to add to that list?
Uh, no, 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 I'm just going off of what.
Yeah.
No, I think that's okay, those were the ones that were.
Yeah.
The biggest and, and older, so, um, I think that it's o- okay. And I think ten years is probably okay for those dollar amounts.
Yeah, yeah.
Or twenty years for much larger dollar amounts, so I think ten years is probably all right. And should be, we should do that.
Okay, well, we'll need.
Howard, you got any drains you wanted to add to them?
Need any, yeah, okay. Uh, we'll need a motion to approve the waivers.
Additional.
Additional waivers for fall twenty-five drainage assessments then.
Make, make that motion.
Howard makes the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Whacker. Discussion on the additional waivers. Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Amber, did you vote on that one?
Uh, no, yes.
Okay.
No, yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we can, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, well, actually, real quick, I forgot to mention with the.
Something else I missed on the agenda?
Well, no, no, I just forgot to mention, I wanted to bring it up because it's kind of a big deal, they, um, for our hazmat team. The North Central Regional, um, they have been working for a couple of years now to get a grant. To purchase a Gemini meter, um, the Gemini meter, basically what it does is, is it helps them identify. Uh, different chemicals and hazmat materials that they, you know, otherwise wouldn't know what they're dealing with, to be able to properly handle it. And, um, you know, deal with it in a safe manner, to make sure that they're protecting their team members, but also, um, members of the public. And they've been working on it for a couple of years, it is now at the desk, um, basically just waiting on approval. To get this grant to, um, and I think it was like an eighty-twenty, so that they'll cover. I think it's the federal government will cover eighty percent of this Gemini meter, I can't remember the total cost of it, but it's a, it's pretty. It's a pretty, uh, big meter, and, uh, no one in our area has one, so it's a, it was a pretty necessary tool. But they're looking to get, get a hold of it, they've been trying for a couple of years now, so it's finally moving on.
So if there's a, a spill. This is NiACOG, is that correct?
Yes.
They're gonna respond, the DNR is gonna respond, who's gonna respond?
So, um, your local emergency management will respond, they will assess the situation to determine. If the hazmat team needs to be called out, DNR needs to be called out, they're the ones that will, will reach out to the, the proper. But yes, uh, in situations where there is hazardous material, um, that's involved with. Whether, like in the instance that I mentioned earlier, a truck with batteries, started on fire inside of the road, hazmat team. started on fire on the side of the road, hazmat teams contacted because it's dealing with lead, you know, lead battery acid. Um, and then that hazmat team will mobilize out um and and either handle the situation or.
I guess where I'm headed, I'm I'm a babe in the woods here, but I mean, so we got, I can't believe that in that situation the DNR is not gonna show up. Do they have one of these Gemini meters and and do we, is every department? I mean, five years from now, are we gonna want a Gemini meter for Sioux County or?
No, with the concern in expense that they are, cause I wanna say they're upwards of like two billion dollars or something like that. We would not be able to afford one, so it's usually a.
Maybe they can't either.
Well, and that's why they're, yeah, there you're talking to the DNR.
Well, if the DNR has one, why does, why does NiOCOG have to have one?
The DNR doesn't, I don't think that's something that they would typically have, that that, I mean, they're they're more concerned with these materials, you know, getting into waterways and and, you know, destroying habitat areas and things like that. The hazmat team is is more um protecting the public and and.
So your first goal when this happens is for NiOCOG hazmat team?
Yeah, well, it's not NiOCOG, it's it's our regional hazmat team, which is um with the Mason City Fire Department.
Good enough. Need a motion to adjourn now.
So.
Okay, motion by Whacker. Need a second? Second by Haas. Discussion. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at nine thirty-three AM.